Pretty cool, I'd like to call up the regular council to order it. Susan, did you do your job?
Counselor Halvishen.
Present.
Counselor Miklara.
Present.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Halibas.
Here.
Counselor Vatki.
Here.
Mayor Lanz, at the.
Thank you. I will be looking for a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of items two and three under section C, very full set, public works supervisor, and adding executive director Paul Peltier from Rams under city administrator's product reports.
Make a motion.
Yep.
Order.
Any other session? All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those? Motion carries.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor House, Helverson, if you have any questions for public participation. If we do have any public participation, I would like to remind you that we asked you to keep your participation to five things or under. First we have David Matt.
A couple of different things. One is the bricks on the sidewalk. I mean, the city hall door, the bricks are down this far. A older person like myself that can't walk that good, that's a lot to break in half. Second thing is, I guess you built the veterans park to consolidate. Did anybody ask any veterans whether it actually be built? Whether it should be there? I know it's where there is a veterans park, at a time. That's kind of in a bad spot. People riding bikes, coming by on the bike trail. Could be running right into people, having picnics and stuff there. Especially if they have young kids, you know, they like to run. I don't think that's a proper spot. And then, one more thing. This pledge allegiance. Who the God are we talking? That should be left out. I don't mind the pledge allegiance, but the under God part, that's a no go. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. E.
Hi. I guess in regards to the veterans car steps in front of my property, our property's been in town for seven, five years, places, depressing. It doesn't belong there. I talked to a couple justices in Minneapolis. And their recommendation to me was to pursue it because the city is very political, but because my husband and I were specifically told by three of the members on the beautification board that it would be benches on concrete and a half circle that they would pave because of this dirt for years. Well, every time I come to a council meeting, it's been from concrete to all of a sudden canopies. Come to another meeting, then it's picnic tables, and now it's a really screwy, screwy parking situation. I know that in the last two days after they removed the cones, I've had seventeen people in two days parked there. Some pull in and drive through, some park on the old park. They're getting quite creative even on my property. Some park in the alley. And some don't know if that's a parking lot or a fishing area. They're fishing stuff or what it really is, but nobody really is comfortable with their children there. And I think that because we didn't make the bar, put Ironman where they put it, that would have been ideal. The dismount course parking outhouses would have been ideal for tenants. The kids park. So I guess what the justice said to me is, how in the hell did it end up in front of my property when there's all of these wonderful places where it was needed? See? And the DMR kind of said, well, the gal that was in charge of the permit was only there for ten months and he wasn't. But that isn't his understanding of the kind of parking that is supposed to be there. It was supposed to be the half circle. Because when you pave that, is the first person, what they do, when they pull in there, they go right down my alley. So not only do I put up a dam in front of the property, but now I've gotten crews in the alley. And as everybody knows, the city doesn't have time to fix them alleys. So now we've got that. I've already had theft from when I first thought there two years ago, out of my garages. I've wanted to improve the property, I spent fourteen thousand dollars taking down trees in front of the house, planting more trees, gardening, trying to make it look nice. Like the idea, I could put my small retirement home where the old house used to be. But my view is the top of canopies and picnic tables and a driveway. So I don't know what happened, but I know my husband died and somebody got a hold of that, went to that, let's put it there. But you know what? That's not right. And I've been told that down in Minneapolis. And another thing, the city does not own the property the canopies and picnic tables sit on. The state of Minnesota does. And the judge very, very, very politely gave me the paperwork for it. It is not due to the city of Chisholm. So now we have canopies and picnic tables on property the city does not own. And if they were gonna own it, every property owner on the lake, because it's considered lake shore, should have been invited and had a say as to what went there. So that's black and white. So I have one or two choices. I can go to the cities, I can get the attorney man to make you move it, or you can save me some money and I can do it through the legislation, I can do that. Or you can come to some common ground here and do something besides nothing. Because this is really old hat. So I'm hoping that you're all smart, you're all good, and you'll make some decisions here. And another thing, anybody who's surfing on these boards, if they're old and can't remember, or they've had strokes or dementia is sitting in, then maybe there should be an age limit for people that surf on these boards that make decisions for the public that aren't qualified to consult. So, and I'm saying that as a nurse. So, that's what I have to say tonight, so good luck, but I think you all have to do something. Because this is not gonna work. Thank you.
And that is all the counseling of your public participation. Moving on to council reports. Counselor Powell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Back in the last council working session, the public utilities meeting, the central iron range sanitary service meeting, and the city safety.
I attended a working session and an HRA meeting last week, and tomorrow will be attending a tour of the National Resources Research Institute in Colorado, followed by a Rams board meeting. Counselor Rock.
Thank you, good evening. First of all, I apologize that I missed the last meeting. I was in Michigan with my volleyball team that I am coaching. So couldn't be here, so my apologies for that. Couple of notes coming up. First, the community foundation has a Halloween burger bash coming up at gyms on October 30th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. Adult baskets are thirteen dollars, and new this year is a kitty basket for ten dollars. You can get your tickets from any board member, including myself, and you can also see me in a hamburger costume outside of gyms that day. Welcoming you to the burger bash. Regarding the chamber, the chamber board that I sit on, there is a survey that is going out to members for community feedback on events and direction for the chamber. First, it's being sent out to the membership to see how many responses we get back before we think about posting it elsewhere, but if you are a member, please take that survey so we can have that feedback. And finally, I have two things for the school district. September is suicide prevention month, the volleyball team is celebrating that tomorrow. They are honoring suicide prevention month with the purple theme. So if you are attending a volleyball game tomorrow, please wear purple. You know, I suggest Viking purple since they're three and O. Nobody expected that to happen. It's just my little plug for them. And also, homecoming begins this Friday. So we all have our kickoff pep list at 2:15 in the gym. And Friday is hat and jersey day. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Bell.
Hi, good evening, everyone. On the 17th, I attended half of the working session I was able to do at the new public safety building, which was really awesome. The Hiving foundation coordinator reached out to me and she wanted to let, have me let the folks, the Chisholm folks know on October 5th at the Hiving High School auditorium at four o'clock, there's a free event for the whole community. And it's the wonderful world of Chris Monroe. It's a kids comedy show, and she's also Minnesota author and illustrator. So everybody's welcome to go to that, it's free, on October 25th. Turn Valentini's event, which all proceeds go to the Angel Fund. So northeastern Minnesota provides financial assistance to families with cancer on the Iron Range. So if you guys wanna support that on October 25th, there's tickets there, you can buy, and raffles going on. And it's a good community engagement. Precious Pass is also looking for volunteers. So if you would like to be a volunteer, you can reach out to them. Their contact number is 254-3300. And if we approve this tonight, it's another one of your chamber events. Halloween.
Yeah, pet parade, pretty phenomenal.
Pet parade at 6:00 p.m. on October 30th. So, let's hand it up, please.
Register your pets.
Yes. Thank you.
Counselor Halvishen.
No report.
Thank you. Hi there, couple quick updates. Under the emergency manager hat, we have met officially now with our public assistance delivery manager from FEMA, Monica. So from the flooding earlier this year, the city did sustain some damage. And we are going through the very fun process of getting together with Monica and getting, we've been tasked with getting all of our data collection now. The department of heads have been tasked with a lot of data collection, getting, let's see, damage assessments, receipts, quotes, progress reports on the things that we have fixed and the things we're hoping to improve also. So that stuff is ongoing, we have a lot more meetings planned. We'll have site visits from some FEMA people. There will be anywhere between two to four days of site visits coming up, and multiple more meetings. But if you have questions on that, feel free to get ahold of me. I'm kind of in my contact with that. So let me know if you have questions, we're just starting with that. It is a long process. On the EMS side of it, we're at 712 calls today, I think that is six calls just today so far. We have till midnight yet. So we picked up a little bit on our EMS calls. Ambulance number three, that feel like we've been talking about forever. We should be taking delivery very late October. And we have to program and install the radios and the computer once we physically have it, but should be in service and respond to calls early November. Those are our updates. Let me know if you have any questions.
Want to use redhead on the list, or is there?
Oh, absolutely. And redhead is a very special case, right? Because it is unlike many other things. So there was definitely some education with FEMA about what redhead is and what brings to our city and how important it is. So one of the things FEMA likes to stress is not just getting things back to the way they are, but they have a huge emphasis on mitigation, so things don't be affected the way they were before. So we're working with Monica on different ways we can do that with redhead. Accessibility is an issue there, just because of how wild that terrain is. So Bridgette has been extremely busy and extremely organized, but she's having to take pictures and video and GPS and a lot of work to make sure that we're getting everything we can out of that. But absolutely, that is definitely a pet project of ours.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, feel free to get ahold of me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your house also.
Madam Council President, I do not have a report tonight, I want to see an official title.
Thank you. So you're only an official administrative.
That's where you're supposed to address.
Good evening. Good morning, Chris Hansel, Madam Mayor. Okay, so just a quick update. So we've been really busy. To date, we have a total of 632 building permits that have been issued with city. And as you can probably guess, the majority of those are roofing permits. So I'm still getting, staying along to other remodels and judges and chats and fences, so that's good. But we've been very busy with that. I am working on the IRRV residential redevelopment grant. So you should be seeing a resolution coming forward for that at the next council meeting. There'll be three single family dwellings and three garages on that application. Other than that, it's been busy, we're creating, creating things, a lot of permits coming through.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, you're just answering.
Thank you, Madam. Just a quick update later, we'll give you our quick update on where we're at with our melon overlay project. It looks like that they got initiated today, but I'll let you from there and give you the scoop on it. With regards to our fist feed project, it's going along extremely well, progressing very nicely now that we've got good dry weather. Utility work is all done. The last portion of it was putting the sewer and water into the alley to the east of Central Avenue to the west of First Avenue southeast. And as a result, now our new list station has been put in operation and is operating. As you see, a lot of the crew and gutter sidewalk has been placed, put in. That crew will be back here, we think, the end of this week or certainly next week. And the final grading for that easterly block, east of Central Avenue. They were able to pull the old list station out once that utility work got done. So that street is being prepped and ready for gravel. What we're anticipating, and as you see, the people out there today, they've been doing a lot of work this week in terms of restoration of the bulldozer, is getting ready for saw in advance. So what we're expecting next week is pretty much to get the streets ready and finish up the crew and gutter with handicap ramps and so forth. And hopefully that first full week in October will begin and get our first layer of base course of black put on. So keep it nice and dry for us. Little bit of dust there, a little bit of rain is fine, but we don't need goly washers or a nitch or two within a house. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Evening, Counsel, thank you. And just a few updates. So melon overlay did start today, got a couple phone calls, already very excited, everyone, you know, get that done. We've all been waiting for that. There'll be a couple new streets, it's super helpful and some hours. So we're working through that, they did start today. We expect the melon machine on Monday. That's the new update today, but it changes daily depending on how it goes. If anything breaks down in Rochester or something, it won't make it here on Monday, it could be Tuesday, Wednesday, something like that. But we'll stay on top of that, because today went very well for kickoff to that. And then, just a few things about the seasons are changing. So the any plants came down. I think our great new vendor, Grand Rapids Floral, we got new baskets and they lasted longer than they've ever lasted since I've been employed here. So we got, it's a huge investment, and they look beautiful and they lasted about three weeks longer than usual. And we got them earlier, we never usually got them before. It was like beginning in June, and we actually had them for Memorial Weekend, so. With that, and then the sweep will be out as soon as we get some more leaves down, they're starting, they're starting to turn, so it'll be done sooner than later, I'm sure. We're done patching for the year, we're on grading stumps and back on trees. And I continue to work on that ninety thousand dollar stormwater grant. The pro gave me a nice reminder on that tonight, but I do have some work orders that I submitted to the grant to get approved for reimbursement, so I'll bring this to the council for final approval. So working on that, and that's what I have for you, you said, something, package. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
All right, so we're back for the evening. I just wanted to report that I played football with this new coordinator, Coach Nelson, has been going extremely well. I got out there and got to see him in action. He has a helper, and the two of them are teaching a lot of skills right on the field, doing extra practices. So it all looked good, and we have twenty-nine players, which is up from last year, so that's good news too. The MCA race, Minnesota Cycling Association race, is coming up in a couple weeks. That's October 11th through the 13th. I just got word from the executive director of the MCA that they're going to be between sixteen hundred and eighteen hundred student athletes, which is on par with two years ago. And he estimated between twenty-five hundred and three thousand people on site per day. So that's a good number, I think, for the community to understand and know and, you know, to promote their business. And we've been working with the Chisholm. Shannon is.
Chisholm.
Chamber. The Chisholm Chamber. That's the one. Of course, the Chisholm Chamber, sorry. And they're doing the callouts to chamber members to do discounts, and that's all already up on the website. So we're ahead of the game this year. We can still use volunteers, so happy to take some. There's already at least one in this room who's volunteered, and I thank him. But there's a lot who haven't determined that they're gonna volunteer yet. So that, anybody from the community can volunteer, spread the word, that's to help with parking. And then, finally, I do wanna give an update on Memorial Park. There was a little bit of a communication issue between two contractors, which is resulting in the timeline being pushed out a little bit. We have a concrete contractor and then the equipment slash board place contractor. And there was a change in the footprint of where they were moving equipment to. And so now we are getting a brand new swing set because it needs to be able to fit. Everything needs to fit in the concrete border and not pull out the concrete border that got put in. So ultimately, I guess, a couple added weeks, but we get a brand new swing set. And the existing swing set, while it was nice, it did have wear and tear on it, so this is good news. And it goes with the color scheme of the whole playground better, so that's great. So that's all my updates. If you have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Library supervisor, yes, I'm not here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Hansel. I don't have a formal report tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And I will be on the agenda later for the contract issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Great pleasure.
Honorable.
Thank you. And then, under city administrator's scrawup, we have Paul Peltier, chief of that Rams.
Madam Counsel President, J. S. Wire, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, beyond, 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 and counsel, thank you very much. My name is Paul Peltier, I'm the executive director of Rams. And after the days we've had, we can all just laugh right now. The range association municipalities and schools. You are no stranger to Rams, Counsel Vatki was on the Rams board, Counsel Miklara serves as an interim appointment now. And I would encourage you, if you're interested, to also put in again for the Rams annual dinner on December 19th. Those nominations will come out shortly. So the entire council is obviously invited, as well as all of our corporate and municipal guests. I'm here today, not in a public comment capacity where there's no interaction, but expectations that we can have conversation over. Talk a little bit about what Rams is, who we are, what we do, and what it matter, and what we can do to help the city of Chisholm. What can we do to be helpful as one range, one voice, one entire Taconic Assistance Area region impacted by the mining industry, Taconic production taxes, and our municipal boundaries? So one of the things Rams does is we break down silos either among communities or among state line. So we build partnerships across geography and within our own borders. So if there's a municipal issue between two municipalities, we try and bring it together. Case in point, great Scott McKee, we're having a conversation, they were having a difficult time getting some answers from a company. Got everybody to sit down in the room together and we got some answers. That's a really important part of what we do at Rams. We advocate for our members, and it's a members-first organization, and it's a range-first type of organization as well. We began in 1939 to push back against getting taken advantage of by a mining company at that time. Oliver Mining Company was taking local production tax, which didn't exist at that time in the form of property taxes, and taking it and sending it to Pittsburgh. The mayors and groups around that time decided, hey, enough is enough, and Rams was formed. They were formed to push back against that, create some legislation that would return that local wealth to the place it was generated. So go to work for the communities of the Iron Range, and that's what we still stand guard over today. So very important work, very happy work. It can be challenging sometimes, but we do work with the entire range delegation and all of our statewide electeds to try and tell the story of the Iron Range, to educate them on that. That brings me into a little bit of background about myself. I've been at Rams for about fourteen months, I took over for Edna Roca Vina and Steve Georgie, my indomitable predecessors who served this organization along with their predecessors for an untold number of years. We have experience in my family being teachers, and so I'm an educator. Tom Bandacquire for fifteen years, my wife's a stay-at-home mom, we got four little kids, they're in the Rockbridge School District. And yes, we did look at the little cute house in Chisholm as well when we were moving here. But you know that market two summers ago, that shoe's a pretty hot one. So hard to find a home. That is one of the things that we focus on, is housing too. So what does Rams do, what's going on? We do all the things. So if it affects life on the range, and it affects your ability to afford your life here in this place we love, we care about it. So some of the things I wanna do today is share with you a map of where we find ourselves. This is a map of the Taconic Assistance Area, and for those of you in the audience, we can provide electronic copies, as well as Steph can make some other copies for you if needed. Or just ask me, I've got copies in the car. There's a big version of this that I call a placemat, because it's really, really nice paper, you can spill coffee on it or whatever your beverage of choice is, and it will clean up very quickly. It tells us where we are in relation to our neighbors. It shows the fifteen school districts, the twenty-seven townships, and the twenty-seven cities that make up the Taconic Assistance Area membership of Rams. And this is an opt-in organization, people see value in it, they wanna be a part of it because they know the good work that's been done and continues to do with the organization. And why do we do that? It's because we're connected to our members. I'm here to ask you what your priorities are, what can Rams do to be a service to the city of Chisholm and your residents, and how can we be helpful moving forward into the 2025 legislative session? In your packet that you've received from me, you'll see a list of 2024 legislative priorities. And that's not a mistake, hey, Peltier, we're looking at 25, what's going on? Hugo Mathwell, remember, was a music teacher, was only ever paid to count four, and repeatedly, sometimes six, okay? But 2025 is in formation right now. You will receive an electronic survey, you will receive phone calls, and I'm here tonight to ask for your feedback. How did we do, what did we do, and what did you see on that list that you liked? What do you wanna see different? What can you, what do you want me to pull on, what new issues are coming up? Those types of things, when I get to the end of my little spiel here. Also in there is a what happened in the legislative session summary. It isn't all the things that Rams particularly went for and advertised for and fought for, but it is a gen- But it is a general sense of what happened in the legislative session. So if you were interested in transportation and you're wondering what happened across the state, this is also in there. And there are a number of sizable wins in the last legislative session for the city of Chisholm, for the Taconite Assistance Area and for our Rams members. I'm not gonna go through every single one of them. You can go through them at your leisure. They're, they're very multitude. And we credit our lobbyists as well as our, our cohort of helpful, um, coalition that make that happen because we can't do it alone. I really want to put a fine point on this. There's only a hundred and fifty-three thousand people in the Taconite Assistance Area. In our seven county region of Northeastern Minnesota, a hundred and fifty-three thousand people. You take two random suburbs around Maple Grove and they got us beat. So what you gotta do? You gotta stand up and see what your needs are and you have to not shy away from that and be proud of that because you thought, thought it through. You've got a history. And the people of Chisholm know all about history. This is the center of the universe after all. I mean, Tony Surge wasn't wrong. So he made sure. Um, but that would be this is my place. I will tell you, my people, suits meetings there. There's a reason that people know Chisholm, right? Um, just going through some of the things that we have worked on recently. We've had a big proponent of broadband. Um, for the last five years leading up to and through the pandemic and to today, um, the easiest of the hard to serve areas have been served. Cities have ostensibly been overbuilt. There are pockets everywhere on non-service, but in St. Louis County in particular, Ledrock continues to be a leg. It's a really big deal. If you know someone who lives in a rural place, like outside of the municipality, it's hard to get around it. So what do we do? We try and drive the funding towards that. We bring providers and community together to make that speed dating situation where they say, hey, does it work for you to serve my area? You say yes, no, we move on until we get to a yes and we don't give up. That's been very gratifying recently. Um, housing is turning into the broadband of the future. Housing shortage is real. It's affecting employers' ability to hire. It's affecting, uh, people's ability to live in a place that they choose. I met with Aaron Shane with the United Way and we discussed the, the problems around housing. Um, you're very fortunate to have an organization like that in your community that's involved and that you are also involved with. Um, I host a housing meetup. We've got a, uh, contribution from a lot of our range communities about what housing looks like right now. We encourage you to look at that. It was in last week's Minnesota Tribune and you can see what, what's going on. You know full well the efforts that, um, your council and your community have engaged in housing. And you know the struggle that that, that comes with. So don't give up on housing. There are lots of programs out there. The legislature allocated one point three billion dollars in the twenty twenty-three legislative session. My question is, how much of that money is making it? Are we ready as communities? Raising that awareness is part of the work of Rams now. Um, as a former educator who used to be on the Board of Teaching for licensure things as well as a, a union negotiator in my role as a teacher, I, uh, now sit on the permanent school fund distributions task force committee. That's the group that decides recommendations for the state legislature on how much of the school royalties dollars go back to schools. Currently, right now, Chisholm Public Schools get about thirty thousand dollars. I think that should be doubled. The communities that produce should be at the table saying, hey, you went up to the whole state, you know, Penopan, you have a lot of kids. They get two point three million dollars. They have a lot of kids. I get it, you know? Uh, but let's have a conversation about that. So we're in those rooms. We're making those conversations happen. We're building relationships. Um, EMS continues to be, uh, a very serious concern across our region. You just heard a report tonight about the number of calls as of half an hour ago. Um, hopefully we stay at six and everyone stays healthy, but you know that your people are here because they care and they're prepared and they're funded and they're ready to go. Doesn't mean it's easy. Doesn't mean it's not strenuous. It just means that you have a solution right now. I know that, um, with range delegation legislators, uh, work very hard to deliver an EMS solution in some way, shape or form, uh, in the form of compensatory aid for losses incurred in the twenty twenty-two year. We know that's not enough ongoing. We'd like to see Medicare and Medicaid really kicking up their reimbursement levels on the federal level. And it's starting to appear that there are things that the state of Minnesota has done and Rams has advocated for that we've maxed out. We've done what we can at the state level. What does that ask look like at the federal level now? And that goes to Brownfield mediation as well. You know that you can't repurpose land if you're landlocked unless you've got money to do it. So working in partnership with ARDC, the state of Minnesota, NPCA regulators, as well as our federal partners, we're going to bring those resources to Northern Minnesota and that conversation to them. Again, that's just a small amount of what we do. It's really exciting work. It's gratifying work, but the best work is when I get to talk to you, take you through some of the things that we have worked on, some of our priorities. You'll see on our legislative priorities, they are, uh, multitude. Uh, and they really touch all facets of life in Northern Minnesota. Um, I've also included a school trust fund baby document at the end. It's a little bit of a, a primer on what happens to that money when it comes in. Uh, but we staunchly defend LGA and its hard-won gains. We don't want to ever see that go back. We know that LGA is the lifeblood of the city and without it, the city will suffer. So we stand strong with our partners across the state who also know that struggle and they also rely on that. Um, and when that wealth is deposited where it belongs, the people benefit. So that, that's a little bit of my, uh, introduction to you. I'm happy to be here. I'm really grateful for the opportunity. Uh, and with that, I'd like to ask you, what can Rams do to be helpful to you? And what would you like to see us advocating for as we head into twenty twenty-five? What are some, some things that Chisholm is working on?
Okay. Uh, so I was on Rams, uh, prior and it's a fantastic organization and thank you for all that you do. Um. For me, all of Chisholm is the center of the universe. It's the heartbeat of the Iron Range for me. Um, and we are very progressive here, much more than surrounding communities, in my opinion. And so, um, you know, we, although we may be landlocked, we do have a housing project that we need to continue to, um, move forward. And we need to continue to get as much funding help as we can for that. Um, I'd also echo your sentiments about, um, the school district. E and I work there. Um, I feel like schools are severely underfunded. Um, and I'm sure every school in Minnesota would echo that. Um, so I think continuing to work on that. Um, childcare, uh, we have another childcare provider in town retiring this year. So, um, that's, that's a big, big thing here, um, is childcare. And then, um, I guess the last thing, um, for me would be, um, local government aid. And I think that, um, we were, we've not been given proper increments, I guess I would say, of, of amount of money increases that we probably shouldn't be getting. And, um, when we, the council gets to meet with Devon soon about budgets, our budget is ninety-five percent. We don't even get a, we don't even have, get to talk about it because it's set. So we're really talking about like a five to six percent window of money, which isn't very much in our budget that we have to then try and divvy out into projects. Well, that we have major projects in infrastructure that is very old. That's usually where the money ends up going. So, um, I think we've done a really good job here, but I think that local government aid really is a big, big thing for me. And that's, that's, thank you.
I think we have a huge infrastructure problem. Your buildings are old, ninety years old, a hundred years old, our streets, our pipes, anything like that. I'd like to see it. Like Rams work with the federal government and try to get some of that social money and make it stream, more like a streamlined process of it.
How is WIF and PFA working out for you on the state level?
Pretty good. You know, it's a pretty, pretty process from humans to the feedback. Quite, quite a bit. So.
Um, I think we could probably use some help in that issue with, I think it's called the fiscal disparities thing where we have these formulas and things where all of a sudden money disappears from us and it goes somewhere else. Um, just kind of hard to, hard to grasp sometimes. Why, why, why that's happening? Why? You know, why is it being distributed the way it is and why are cities losing money in that field? And also on state grant administration. We've had a lot of difficulty lately with state grant administration.
Any particular agencies?
We could follow them on mine too, but our latest one was a AR grant that was lost due to lack of communication.
So what was that? Thank you.
With our taxes, you said we had to, or St. Louis County taxes? Is that for you?
No, it all, I leave, I leave my sister here to give us some education on fiscal disparities and how it somehow, how the formulas work and how it's going to change and you all of a sudden a lot of places lost spots in money because of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's something to do with North Shore and term rentals or something like that.
Interesting. Okay.
Hold on that. And a lot of people like, that's a hard one because they don't know, like, it's hard for me to explain to someone why that money got taken from us when I really understand it myself.
Did a big job explaining, but it's hard to follow.
Yeah. But yeah, fiscal disparities is what it was called.
Um, something to do with a lot of, or a rule that changed, where properties were changed, so it's fair value, you know, tax, they changed the formula.
I got one more thing, if I don't mind. Um, on the EMS side of things, um, Jed and I, you know, are on that, on the ambulance here. But is there some kind of funding or help or something where, you know, uh, we have really old radios? And, um, it, I mean, I'll be, I can tell you from personal experience that some of the time I, 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 we get a call and I don't even know what it is because like my radio is just, you know, it's so hard to understand. Is there eating? And, you know, that's important stuff when you're responding.
And these radios aren't cheap.
Oh, five hundred thousand dollars could place off through your terms.
So I think, you know, a little push for that.
Well, I think we're doing a wonderful job here in Chisholm. Um, Stephanie and the whole, everybody here is working really hard on grants and working on housing development and Jim is working on moving here. You guys are all movers and shakers. You know, I think we're doing a great job, you know, and if, I think if there's anything more that we can do, just throw it at us. Well, I don't look right.
Being short.
I believe in her.
One of the questions that I have with us, Madam Council President, I'll wait till the next.
I, I don't have an intention to argue with that.
One of the things I wanted some feedback on is the, the Minnesota Legislature provided the resolution to the Tyler Beahan lawsuit, which has, has to do with, uh, tax growth for properties. And one of the unfortunate consequences that we're noticing is that some cities are noticing that blight is rearing its ugly head. And the ability to manage blight is now turning into a thing that we have to talk about in a different way. Okay? Um, this, what is that conversation like in Chisholm? What can be helpful to that? Right now I'm noticing that there's no compensatory pot of money to anyone who wants to manage those properties. Falls back on the city. Yes, the county owns it. Who's the rightful owner of that? What does it come down to when it's your neighbor and it's right next to your house or something like that? Those, those questions are starting to be presented now. And as an unintended consequence of fixing a, um, mandate from the US Supreme Court, which I guess is weird because like in a closely divided Supreme Court, uh, we got a unanimous ruling that Minnesota was in violation of, um, of, of federal law and that constitutional, unconstitutional taking of property. So if we're going to be known for something, I guess we get rally around this, right? No, wish not, right? Um, but ultimately blight is a real concern. Who manages it? Who pays for it? How does it happen? Um, do you have to shop the list early, the delinquency list? Do you get site control that way? And there are multitudinous solutions. Um, what kind of solutions would you like us to advocate for at Rams? Is that a conversation you've had yet or yet to be determined?
Uh, we talk about it often. I bet there's times.
Are you referencing just the taxes?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're referencing, you know, you know, they are connected is what I'm trying to say.
Well, we have our personal property and blight issues and then I don't know, do we have a lot of?
Oh, yeah, we have a lot of, a lot of. But looking at the house that is, is then a man or that's, that's, that's come down or, or, um, you know, look, look. Any, any, any tax property that's falling apart. Who's it come down to? The city ends up, uh, raising that building even though it's coming, you know, and it ends up on the city line and staying. So there's a lot of mitigated help that could help that. A few years ago, I took, we have a program to assist on that, but that is gotten smaller and smaller where they used to actually raise the building. So yeah, it always falls back on the city. Uh, I look for a city, you know, with the school, if what's gonna happen there. So I would encourage this city, like others, to collect your stories about what this impact looks like for you. Connect those to me and I can help connect you to state changemakers. So that we tell a story for the Iron Range and how it's affecting us. And you know what? Every community is feeling this pain right now. And if enough communities across the state, and if we do our part, bring this story to bear, people don't care about numbers. Numbers are great. If you can put a story and a face to it, that's when you're going to get some action. That is very important. So as you collect those stories and that impact, you work with your city staff, you work with your law enforcement, you work with your, your zoning officials, all that, anyone who works with this. Collect those stories, connect them to me and I will help connect you to people who can help make a difference. And we'll try and push that together. Because as the tagline is one range, one voice, but it's made up of everybody's individual contributions. And that's the screen.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, I think I'm going to tie it in front of you today and I'll stick around, uh, to kind of listen to the, uh, the rest of the council action today. Um, and I told, um, Mr. Scrabble that I'd like to stick around for a picture at the end if you could have me. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a couple of things to sort of quote today, council. I was able to connect with Pickland from St. Louis County, um, on the new veterans area with the parking that has been implemented in there. He said there is no concern with the permit that, um, that they have with the state, or with the city, excuse me. But the permit allowed was the curb cut to allow, to allow the construction up there. Um, he said these were some major combined. He didn't have concerns with that. I have, um, I've also got my contact from the state too, too. And there doesn't seem any concern available. Thank you.
Right. Moving on to consent agenda, including list of bills, communications, and this previous meeting's payroll and overtime. And if there are any corrections, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. And with no unfinished business, we'll move on to new business. Action.
Good evening. Madam also President, Council. Um, just before you, just a little educational piece. This isn't a gambling permit. Um, this is a premise permit, uh, license for, um, a lawful gambling to be taken, uh, or to be held. Um, which this goes to the gambling commission for free approval, but these need a resolution from council. And, um, it's not very often we do these, that's why I always give that little educational piece. So, um, as you may or may not know, this is, you know, is looking at opening upstairs again. And, um, they're looking for, um, gambling, uh, in, in a bar that'll be coming liquor license will be coming soon, um, for your approval. I have to say it was it, but, um, for now it's just, uh, we need, uh, resolution number zero nine two four dash seven seven to be approved by the council. We're going to allow charity gambling at that purpose.
Thank you. All right, council. I look for a motion to adopt resolution number zero nine two four dash seven seven. Approving the premises license for M. That's post twelve at the Silvinsky Dome.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Rocky.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Halbersten. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Aye. You can. Didn't want to listen to you all night anyway. Oh, I saved my time for you.
First item on my agenda, seventeen, is asking you to set up a public hearing date of time. And I'm proposing at final clock in advance of your next meeting on October ninth. The facility plan of which you have a compio that provides a capital improvement program starts on page nineteen. Whenever we are going after funding for the sanitary sewer, what we call the clean water side of the public facilities of the authority funding on our, on our infrastructure replacement projects, we have to prepare a facility plan similar to the one that is included here. The past we did it when we did the Lakeview addition, and we also prepared the facility plan for our fifth street settlement. In moving forward, in future years, the gentleman at the pollution control agency suggested that we do a five-year plan such that we don't have to do it on an annual basis. So that's really what this is all about, is bringing this plan forward. We have to hold a public hearing on it and have it adopted by the city council. And as I said, as you see, Susan provided you with the text of this facility plan. We did not include the appendices, which quite often were just policies of the city dealing with that point source televising inspection, our chapter fifty-two and fifty-three dealing with water and sewer ordinances and policies within the state. But if you want to turn to page thirty-four, which is the five-year program, which I took from that that council adopted last year to move forward with their projects. It was color-coded, but this is not. But I'll just give you a quick update if you want to note it. You know, our current twenty twenty-four project is our fifth street south project from the lake at First Avenue Southeast over to Second Avenue West. Now this state right there, the next two blocks going west on Fifth Street on the south side of the school, you've got a program for next year, so we coordinate that construction with that that's going on at the school. So that would be from Second to Fourth Avenue. And then from Fourth Avenue over to the East Front Joe Highway seventy-three is programmed for twenty twenty-eight. Second Avenue, which would be along the east side of the school, but going from First Street South down to Sixth Street South is the proposed twenty twenty-nine project. Street South on the south side of the school is Sixth Street Northeast and Fourth Avenue Northeast on the north and the east side of Heritage Manor is part of next year's program. So Fifth Street and the Heritage Manor area are next year's projects. The other project then is on Fifth Street Northwest, and this is in preparation to extend to better utilities to our proposed Wenton addition. And what I've got proposed is that in twenty twenty-six, we would do the reconstruct or the replacement from Second Avenue Northwest to Fifth Avenue Northwest. And then the following year, twenty twenty-seven, we would go from Fifth Avenue to what would be Eighth Avenue, where a block western Seventh Avenue, which is the entry point into the proposed Wenton addition. So with that, I would just ask you to set that public hearing date. We've suggested again at five o'clock in advance of your next regular council meeting on October ninth, I believe it is. And with that, I would have to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you have one question? As the infrastructure under Seventh Avenue Northwest been shot, you know, what kind of shape is that? That was terrible.
It was replaced from fourth to sixth back, it's been at least ten years ago. And we have televised from Sixth Street then up to Eighth Street. One block is in fair shape. The other section is in very poor shape.
I would like to say, Jim, this, this plan, wow, you're amazing. I mean.
Come on, you said, would you keep?
I should know. I mean, I highlighted some great points in here that you, you said about, you know, thirty-one thousand six hundred and fifty, Lee, Lee?
Letting off what?
Letting off speed. I mean, you knew it. I mean, like, this is, this is really good.
People were like, good tracks.
This is good. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would look for a motion to schedule a volunteer on October ninth at five P. M.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jen.
Support.
Thank you, Councilor Rocky. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. And if you please turn to page thirty-five. This is a annual program that we have administered through St. Louis County, which is of very good value for the city. Allows us to take advantage of some excellent pricing because of the number of communities with, as well as the county themselves, to participate in. And Larry and I have put this together, and in that, in the following pages, you'll see each of these programs that they offer to us and what we're proposing in terms of budget at this point. But we can always amend that budget, you can delete it if it becomes necessary to balance the budget for the city. But what we do, excuse me, participate in, we've been trying to do the first to the crack ceiling and then what we call the chip and scrub ceiling. We've been trying to promote that on an annual basis at a level of fifty thousand dollars per year so that we can really very, most economically maintain our newer streets and keep them in good ragged condition while we try to upgrade through mill and overlay projects and infrastructure replacement projects, those that, as you identify as being ninety and under two years old. And you'll see the attached sheets, which is showing or listing where we are proposing, at least as our priorities, because right now the county actually goes, comes over and goes through it with Larry to identify and make sure that they're good candidates, that they're not too far gone, that it's a waste of money. So the crack ceiling, scrub ceiling, we've been participating in. The agri crushing is a very important program for us. We're getting a very good price on agri, becoming like gold up here and purchasing it through the county. And as you'll see, we're purchasing, proposing to purchase about eleven thousand tons, about three thousand, excuse me, closer to about six thousand tons, about three thousand cubic yards. We will actually use if we move forward, our infrastructure projects on Fifth Street South at the school and then up around the Heritage Manor area. We actually furnish the gravel because it's much more economical than when we get outside funding, it reimburses us over and above that. But the balance of it, which is about five thousand cubic yards, probably six thousand tons that Larry uses for our street maintenance and then for when they're doing utility repairs, it's backfill for that. So that's a combination of both, used for our infrastructure replacement projects as well as for the street maintenance. The maintenance driving is what we do along Main Street, centerline, lane lines for that, very economical. And then you'll see there's the administrative fees, which are just a few hundred dollars, which is still very economical. As compared to different fund respects going through the bidding process, provides all the construction maintenance, they process all the invoices or payout issues. So it's a very good program. So with that, all we need right now is that your approval on resolution oh nine twenty-four dash seventy-eight entering into a cooperative agreement with St. Louis County.
I make that motion. Thank you, Councilor Tom.
Support.
Thank you, Councilor Rocky. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, moving along, almost page two here. Real easy one. We had the, we had last council meeting, we had some of the equipment and vehicles put on the surplus list so we could auction them off or do bid and deal there. And one of them showed themselves that needs to go as well. So Tiffany and the ambulance crew was using a retired squad car and fell apart on them, so. So anyway, with that, I ask you to, for your support, to buy resolution number zero nine two four dash seven nine to add this vehicle to the surplus list and the options.
Thank you, Larry. Counsel? I'm looking for a motion to adopt a motion. Zero nine two four dash seven nine, declaring surplus equipment.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Councilor.
Support.
Thank you, Councilor Rocky. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. And then for the add to the council agenda too. I have spoke of it, so when we had an opportunity come up, I've been looking for a new truck from the garbage department. The garbage farm's doing very well. You know, we started off with two thousand twenty-one with all brand new system and the rates, rates are good, some of us on the range. And, you know, we have our employees that are doing the work, not contract, and we're doing a very good job. And we appreciate that. We have a bulk getting around because that's very successful and it's, it continues to grow. And we keep it, we keep it affordable and we keep it, you know, mainstream. So anyway, with that, we'd be looking, it showed, so it showed itself that we need a truck for the garbage department to be able to, you know, manage all these carts and stuff like that, so. And then the PUC has approved the purchase. And so I'd be looking for final council approval to buy this twenty twenty-three Chevy fifteen hundred two-wheel drive truck used for the garbage department for thirteen thousand two seventy-five from Dunton, Delaware Ford and right now this. Thirty-four thousand two seventy-five.
Counsel, any questions?
I think there was just a error. Was this one fifty-three thousand?
That's just a competitive bet. That was a, that's a, oh, so I did satisfy the competitive bidding requirements of Alcoa. I got a quote on a twenty twenty-three used Ford at one fifty as well.
Thank you, Larry.
So the owner won't capture.
Counsel, I would be looking for a motion to approve the request to purchase the used twenty twenty-three Chevrolet fifteen hundred two-by-four truck for Rocky's garbage department for a total of thirty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars with the funds coming from the enterprise.
Yep.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Rocky.
One second.
Thank you, Councilor Halba. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, thank you. And then, and then just the outfit for the truck. Yeah, we spoke about the lift gate, local lift gate and strobe lights, back raft, the back window, mud flaps, those little things. So with that, from United Truck Body, there are local outfit dealer, and they take care of us very well. I look for your support in the moment fifty-three hundred seventy dollars for those outfits, new truck, new year's truck.
Make that motion. Thank you, Councilor Tom.
Support.
Thank you, Councilor Rocky. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There are none, motion carries.
Good job. Thank you.
That's for the extension. I'm asking for support of accepting a donation of five hundred dollars from the Chisholm Football Quarterback Club to the blight football program for supplies. That's on page forty-seven. Very great call to the quarterback club and hopeful that we will turn out some future football players to Chisholm football. Go Blue Stripes.
Thank you, Brigitte. Counsel, I would be looking for a motion to adopt resolution zero nine two four dash eight zero to accept a donation from the to the city of Chisholm, from the Chisholm Football Quarterback Club, in that amount of five hundred dollars to earmark for the Chisholm Mark Department Blight Football Supplies.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Rocky.
Support.
Thank you, Counselor Halbersten. Any further discussion?
I guess I can just say that for those that aren't aware, the quarterback club is the booster club for the high school football team in Chisholm. And I'm, I'm at their meetings, although I'm not a voting member, but I go and give a report as a A.D. But they, the boys work hard fundraising, and this donation is for the future. I mean, they're, you know, our class sizes, although they remain good and level and steady, you know, we've had noticed that some kids aren't playing football, you know, and the numbers aren't getting there. So we have to put this, some funds into recruiting and to getting them excited about football. And so I'm sure we'll see this often, but this is a great, a great thing for them to, to financially contribute to that program as a feeder program, and it is their feeder program.
And I would say this might have, is this their first donation?
Yes, they do have a fundraiser this Friday, yes, New Storage Barbecue.
Ooh, what is that?
At the football field, from elevens till it's gone.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There are none, motion carries.
On page forty-nine, in your packet is a contact with BAR. There's two contracts coming tonight, and I think the entire council is familiar with the language involved alone having been at the working session. This first one is requesting to accept BAR's proposal for site plan, cost estimates, bidding assistance, and construction administrative, administration services. This particular one on page fifty-three has, you know, that list of tasks that we have mentioned. And task three, four, six, and seven would be voted on contingent on funding in this in the vote that you're doing tonight, so. Make that.
Thank you, Councilor Tom.
One second.
Thank you, Councilor Halba. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion. I remain opposed to these contracts for the same reasons I brought up at the working session. I don't feel the scope is appropriate yet. I think the cost is high. And should be done in phases rather than go on some contract like this. And lastly, this contract was brought forward, and you can send for a red act committee or a partner. So I, I remain opposed to these until we can get them properly scoped and done in phases.
Yes, could be the knowledge that that's, I think that's a good. It's not so big.
Oh, yeah, it's a good session, we discussed it.
Yeah.
I'm still opposed to it.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion there, it's like, aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Um, the next contract on page sixty is a contract with BAR requesting council to accept BAR's proposal for bidding assistance, consulting work upon landlord agreements and stroll concept and bidding assistance for the I triple R's and activity grant. This is the second contract that we discussed at the working session, and I, I'm recommending that, that we approve this contract.
Thank you, Brigitte. I, I apologize, we have to go to the, the last. I, I apologize, we have to go to the last item really quickly. Do you want to make clarification on that?
Yeah, we just recommend that everybody announce their vote on that last item since it wasn't unanimous. So that we can get that to the record, please.
Are you going to do a roll call?
Yeah, call me.
I agree.
Counsel Halbison?
No.
Counsel McLaRabba?
Yes.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Counsel Halaba?
Yes.
Counsel Baki?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So, yeah, page sixteen is the second contract and I'm asking for, um, support and acceptance of BAR's proposal for the connectivity, L triple R connectivity grants.
Counsel, I would be looking for a motion to approve the BAR engineering and electrical design and building systems services related to, in contract, not trails.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Looking for a second?
Support.
Thank you, Counselor. Sir, any discussion?
We have a discussion. We oppose for the same reasons of opposing the previous contract.
Any further discussion? So do you wish to have a roll call, please, please?
Counsel Halbison?
No.
Counsel McLaRabba?
Yes.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Counsel Halaba?
Yes.
And Counsel Baki?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, our city attorney.
Yeah, I'm not Brian Lindsey, but I'm filling in for him. Those are pretty awesome. So we have before you, counsel, I believe at the last meeting, there was a closed session to negotiate this contract for city administrator Strava. Um, I believe you've got a copy of it in there and you see it's redlined from the prior contract. I'll just go through the, I'll summarize the changes briefly. I'm not going to go into great detail, but then I'm happy to answer any questions. So bottom line, section two, we have new terms, this will go for another three years. The other change would be that the employee resignation, advancement notice for resignation was reduced from ninety days to forty-five days. In section three, then again, resignation would be included as a reason for the employee to have severance pay. And again, there was a little bit of a change in terms of a cap of the seventy-five day cap on, on collecting any time in severance. I think that's pretty straightforward. Again, we've got the forty-five day notice for resignation listed in that section. Compensation also changes, it's still a staged compensation plan and it'll adjust each year for the next three years. In section four, there was an addition put in under fringe benefits that the city administrator would receive any benefits provided for the MAB contract where this contract is silent. So this isn't addressed in here, then the MAB contract would control those fringe benefits for the city administrator. Again, vacation days, you'll see that those changes went up a day for each year. Again, staggered. And again, the sick pay, the clarification of how that is calculated was put in there. So those were the only changes, the rest of the contract are being the same. And I know the council's had some time to talk about and think about. If you have any questions for me, terms or meaning of things, please let me know.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? I would look for a motion to approve administrator Strava's contract. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Counselor.
One second.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion?
Keep doing what you're doing, Steph. You're amazing.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Moving on to our charter.
Good evening. I have two actions. First is the truth and taxation public hearing certification. Every year we have to have a truth and taxation meeting sometime between the end of November and the middle of December. That is on page seventy-two and then page seventy-three is the report I get sent to the, um, we were thinking, uh, six oh one on Wednesday, December eleventh. I believe that has been back past practice.
Counsel, any questions? I would look for a motion to schedule the truth and taxation public hearing for December eleven, twenty-five four, beginning at six oh one P M.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Counselor.
Support.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Then, uh, my, my resolution number zero nine two four dash one, proposed tax claim. End of page seventy-five, I choose endless template. And page seventy-five basically gives set increments of five percent to the current two thousand twenty-four levy to give us projected twenty twenty-five. Each percent increase is roughly twenty-two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Then page seventy-six is each one percent set increase. The average, uh, five-year average that the council has increased levy is six point six percent. And the only thing we're doing now is setting the, basically the ceiling of the levy. And there'll be discussion in the week from now in the working session. And so we'll make decisions then and come to a, a better idea of the final levy. I think our suggested, um, rate increase is set at ten percent and we're slightly going to work from there.
Counsel?
Yeah, um, you know, it, it can't go higher. I mean, that's what we're saying, it can't go higher. Obviously, we always try to go lower. Typically, we do get lower, but I have no issue and I'll make the motion for it set at ten percent.
So we have a motion from Counselor to adopt resolution zero nine two four dash eight one to set the preliminary proposed tax levy for twenty twenty-five at ten percent. We're looking for a second.
One second.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? So just remind me, how much would ten percent be then?
Uh, it'd be about two hundred and twenty thousand. Yeah, each, each one percent could be twenty-two, twenty-three thousand.
Just so the folks at home know too, you know? I was, yeah, just got to read the cover of that passport, sorry. Yeah. Ten percent would be two hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And just again, for clarity, this is a preliminary levy, this is not a final levy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Susan, hold on, please.
Counsel Halaba, French, Counsel Halbison?
Yes.
Counsel McLaRabba?
Yes.
Counsel Barton?
No.
Counsel Halaba?
Yes.
Counsel Baki?
Yes.
You, motion carries. City attorney, Scrava.
First item I have on the agenda is resolution number zero nine two four dash eight two to make application to the Chisholm Community Foundation for improvements on the, on the Chisholm Ravina. This application will be for funding of the bleacher cleaning system. I mean, you've been there, you're familiar with that, it's about the bleachers of the cleaning system. As the council knows, we have big projects starting next year at the Ravina Hurley Club, so we're just trying to get some funding to do some of the extras that aren't within that larger scope. This is one of those things, so the amount, the application will be in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars to request funds from the Chisholm Community Foundation for the over support on that.
Awesome. Make that motion. Thank you, Counselor.
Sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I need those things, because I'm on that committee.
You know, I think it's make a record.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Next item I have on the agenda is Chisholm Ravina Chamber requesting for Lake Street for the treat. What they're requesting for the barricades on Lake Street for the Halloween event on October thirtieth from two thirty to seven. We discussed this in our staff meeting yesterday. No concerns from the staff of getting that up and ready to go. It's a fun time for everybody in town looking for support for the Chamber event.
All right, uh, counsel, we would be looking for a motion to approve Lake Street people barricaded on Wednesday, October thirtieth from two thirty P M to seven P M from the entrance of the keyboard liquor parking lot to the alley after the keyless park for the Lake Street picket treat and Halloween pet parade events organized by the Chisholm Chamber.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Counselor.
Sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Next item I have on the agenda is to support the action. As the council is aware, we do have gambling funds that we utilize to support organizations within our region. Last year, we did support this with a five hundred dollar sponsorship. My recommendation is that we would do the same for this year also.
Thank you.
For the conference.
Make a motion.
For?
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars, all right. Second. Thank you, Counselor. Hala and Counselor. Any discussion?
I do have one thing.
Okay.
Um, it is, I, I think if I remember correctly, and I could be wrong, but I think last year we tied our funds to Chisholm students. And so I'd like you to consider maybe, I think, your motion so that the money that we put in goes, because it can go to any student. But I, like, I think it would be appropriate for us to specifically make sure that our money goes to Chisholm students.
I can, I'm, I'm supporting you, please.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll make my second. Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion?
Thanks, Charles.
Yes, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Um, the next item I have on the agenda is a request for support from Rebecca Anderson, who's here today. And if you have anything to say or you want me just to shake it.
I can.
Yeah. Sure, you can come on up. So Rebecca owns a commercial building downtown. We've been doing a lot of work, and you know, she received a demo draft from my supplier that's been working through the city on that. So a lot of packages that are building a month ago, a couple of weeks ago, and it's looking great. So she has some ideas for some art mosaic projects over in town.
Yeah, Rebecca Anderson, I'm a business owner and artist. And one of the things I am looking at doing is, I've been working a lot on pushing myself to get my art out there more, doing a lot more mosaic art projects specifically, um, very experimenting, experimenting with high-track tile. And if you're interested in seeing these, I know you've been building a mechanic, a wooden bathroom floor. And so I have been taking a lot of classes on different styles of mosaics. And I'm doing one with glass, and so like, a, um, I guess, I don't know, can you describe it? But anyway, I'll show you quickly. So basically, I'm looking to try to do a grant application for an early artist group. Uh, and this would be for a public installation of an art piece. Uh, I'm looking specifically at doing a mosaic installation. It's just basically a public piece where if this city of Chisholm would be willing to have an installation done, I'm looking at specifically like potentially a poplar or something like that to fill and make it beautiful. And so, um, there's no funding asked for or anything, it's just a permission to do a mosaic in a site to be determined in the future. So I just need a lot of letter of support in order to apply for the grant. Doesn't guarantee that I'll get it or anything like that, but it's just something I was hoping to do to beautify the city and looking to, if I receive the grant, will be something in the spring. We have one conversation on.
And Rebecca, I spoke to, obviously coordinated with Ravina Gem on the site location.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can get in the packet there, just like some examples of the moose, the one that I did before. And the one in the top left corner, that's actually not my piece. That was what I was inspired by to try to find some opportunities to where people are in our local area saying, why can't we fix this? And so, um, I don't necessarily know I can fill every pothole in Chisholm, but I'd like to try to at least do one and see how it goes.
All opposed? Thank you, this is a very great solution. Not a mermaid question. Rebecca, can you tell, tell us where your business is and what, what business is it?
Yeah, so first and foremost, like I have a business named the Wise Out in Consulting. They do a lot of project management, but essentially I have three areas of economic development, workforce development, and community development. And one of the areas of community development that I'm specifically focusing on is, I'm very passionate about economic development. And in order to do both at the same time, you need a place for artists. And so the downtown space that I'm working on is to the right of Casey Drug, if you are on the Main Street. Been working on trying to get that building up and going quite some time. I almost have a bathroom, so. It is better, but we just gotta get the pressure pump done, so. So, yeah, so I'm hopefully opening an art gallery on the Main Street soon. And I'm hoping to have other artists there who are also displaying. And just so the community has more arts options available for, for people to see and be a part of. It overall does increase the value of walkable traffic downtown and overall can help with that, so. Thank you. Yeah.
I'll make the motion for the letter of permission from the council.
Thank you, Counselor.
One second.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion?
Any discussion? So I see on the bill is registered, we're already doing work.
And that's actually the grant, the grant that I was talking about. So we did N triple R internal development with Rebecca's building, and that's, that's real versus her.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Spurging all the garbage out of you. So we're here for a while. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item I have on the agenda is it's time to schedule the joint meeting with the county township. October twenty-ninth is the proposed time for that, which is a Tuesday at, um, at five thirty, if that works.
October twenty-ninth, five thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Here.
Um, there. That works very well, if that's your view. I'll just coordinate with them and let them know that it moves to the council, like, and, of course, that's what I'm doing. With them, so we just like, I'm not sure.
Okay, counsel, I would like for a motion to schedule a joint meeting with the county township. Okay, Counsel, I would like for a motion to schedule a joint meeting with the local township on October twenty-eighth at five thirty P M at the Falcon Community Center. Make that motion. Thank you, Counselor Donkey. Thank you, Counselor Donkey. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Clearing them. Motion varies. Alright. Next, we have Counsel Donkey to discuss I triple R mine and reclamation matching grants.
Thank you. Um, Redhead has three locations where the mine that scopes are experiencing instability, sliding issues, damage, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the first site is the, uh, North Start Trail, and that was lost over June and started. Um, discussed activity earlier. Uh, severe rains from washed this whole property, potentially FEMA money to reimburse for that. And it closed the trail, and the trail is still closed. We're waiting on an interim trail to maybe open up just to get traffic back on it, but there's a, a pretty substantial repair job to be done there. And after we, well, trail was repaired, rerouted, the old trail's gonna get closed and there'll be. Uh, the second site, North Rim Trail flooded during the twenty twenty-two storms. Um, I retreat over top of its banks, southern area, and that was due to plug culverts. Um, Larry, uh, worked very hard with contractors and with other tracks and their project. They unplugged one of the culverts and then they replaced the other culvert here this past year, this past winter, when they rerouted the T V trail and did that upgrade in the east end of the pit. And Larry, uh, also began doing the North Rim repair and he, uh, got started, dug the culvert in and, uh, was in the process of getting it finished, but the project was stopped. Um, and we now since lost our funding, so we're looking at ways to still repair that because it does need repair. And, um, finally, the third one, the suffering trail, has been sliding probably for fifty years. Um, but in the past few years, it's slid more and more and it's getting closer and closer to the trail. Eventually, the trail will need to be revalued. It's not a substantial rerouted. And right now, it's not a priority, um, compared to others. So, the problem with the I triple R grants is they're willing to give them, they're easy to get, but they are matching grants. So they're fifty-fifty matching, um, ten points, so we can award those at his discretion, but we have to have matching funds. And at this point, I don't know if the city has any matching funds. Um, so I'm requesting that our staff look into our budget and are there any accounts where we actually came out under this year? We can afford ten thousand dollars, fifteen, thirty, thirty up to thirty, I would think would be a, the maximum. In our Redhead budget, we have ten thousand dollars allocated for promotions. I don't know if we spent that or not. In the miscellaneous budget, we have forty thou, forty-nine thousand dollars for miscellaneous, which I don't know if we spent that or not. And I have the call numbers here, I haven't, I don't need to look at those. On the Redhead, it's one oh one, four fifty-two, ten, dash three forty. I'm assuming we've spent all our maintenance money already on that head, but I'm not sure either. Our contingency miscellaneous is one oh one, forty-nine, two fifty, dash four four two. And then we also had a miscellaneous budget for motor. Don't know what that is. That's all a review or just a contingency for fuels? That's also under miscellaneous, one oh one, four, twenty-two fifty, dash two twelve. There was just a few things that I saw on our budget, it was like, well, I don't know if we're spending that or not, they're just kind of listed as miscellaneous or promotion. Maybe we've spent that money and maybe it's not available. The other thing I thought of was, I believe our mill over路 project came in well in our budget, so I don't know if there's any possibility to shed funds there. So all I'm asking is that the staff look to see if there's any place left in our point blank for a budget where we could put up some matching money. And, um, if so, then we can look into it as mine and reclamation grants. And they are designed to repair mining sites, mining property that, you know, needs repair to de-erosion damage, sliding, plug overs, stuff that just needs to be fixed in some of these mining areas. They've been abandoned for, you know, fifteen years.
Thank you, Counselor Donkey. I, I would look to our, either administrator Strava or Dr. Smith. Or did, do we?
We've, yeah, I, the Redhead budget, we don't have anything currently. Um, the other items that you got listed, I don't know off the top of my head. Miss Lane's fields is for the school, I know that. Um, I have to go back and look. I don't believe we have, um, leftover in the current budget, but I can't say that for sure. I'll look at, look at it. Um, I just also want to recognize that we are working with FEMA to get some funding for those projects. And we also have a meeting with the D N R Marl to secure additional needs. Um, dollars for that. So we are looking towards getting additional funding for those, those projects that also have, we're seeing that's addressed.
I would say that, um, the North Rim Trail is vulnerable because we didn't finish the rigode when we started. So if there is any, anything to prioritize, I would prioritize that right now. We were on a roll, we were getting it fixed and then it got stuck and now it's, it's okay. But we really shouldn't finish, or we might subject to a bigger repair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And you?
Okay, I'll take the, the budget working session.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any items under these areas? Alright, and there are, is no further discussion? I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion. Support.
Counselor Donkey, um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed? Clearing them. Motion varies.